Hi, everyone. My name is Bud Dunham. I'm the Town Manager in Sandwich. And it's become a tradition that before any town meeting, I usually come to Sandwich Community Television and do a quick overview of all the articles on the warrant. So just coming up on Monday, May 5th, at 7 o'clock at the Sandwich Middle High School will be our annual town meeting. So before I jump into the articles, I just wanted to touch on a few things. It's really important to know that if the public is interested, there's a ton of information on the town's website, which is www.sandwichmass.org. And when you type in "mass," it's M-A-S-S. There's a lot of information right on our homepage with links to not only the full warrant that was posted late last week, but also the recommended FY26 budget. Every single piece of information that the Select Board and the Finance Committee receive is included on the website. And so if anyone's interested in looking from home, please check that out. And then I also want to point out, and we do this every year, but I don't think we spend much time on it at town meeting, but there's actually usually more pages of reference material printed at the back of the warrant as opposed to the warrant itself. So a couple new things this year I wanted to highlight. There's a special page on where the reference material starts with a QR code. And if anyone clicks on that with their phones at town meeting, it will bring them to a document that our town clerk, Taylor White, has put together with input from moderator Sean Roush that just explains like a town meeting 101 just gives you an idea of, you know, why certain people sit on the stage, what sort of reports officials make about the articles, you know, how votes are taken, things like that. So it's just an informational document that people could be able to access from their phones. And then printed in the back of the warrant is a lot of information related to the articles. And I would say one of the things that if people, again, had the time, even as they're sitting at town meeting before it starts, we've added a new feature the last few town meetings where I try to do a really brief summary of every article, literally one sentence or two, and then explain what the likely funding source is for that article. And if the funding source impacts taxes, what's the impact the proposed upcoming year versus the year that we're in now? So people would be able to see the difference. So just would strongly recommend people take a look at some of those documents in the warrant because it'll make things easier when you go to vote and will probably make town meeting go quicker. So I'll just jump right in and start talking about the different articles. So Article 1 is to accept the town reports. They were actually just physically delivered yesterday, so we'll have copies at town meeting for people to take if they'd like them. There's a gorgeous picture of the new boardwalk on the cover. Really pretty, so it's worth checking out that report. And then also the Select Board will provide a brief overview of our FY26 long-range plan. It's something the Board works on every year and it outlines some of our primary tasks for the upcoming year. Wouldn't be a surprise for people who regularly attend town meeting, but there's a lot of focus on our wastewater requirements, how we progress on those. There's a lot of information about how to address some of our operational needs that we've identified over time and to do it in a reasonable economic fashion. And there's also some information in there about our bigger capital needs, which really on the town side, other than wastewater boil down to trying to address our DPW facility and the downtown fire substation. That's for another town meeting. There's nothing on the warrant related to that project. Article 2, in many ways, is the most important article on the warrant and that funds the vast, vast majority of our FY26 budget. The easiest way I could describe the FY26 budget versus FY25, it's basically a level service budget for both town and school services with one significant addition, which I'll touch on in a second. And then it funds all the rest of our expenses that we do throughout the year, whether it's things like liability insurance, health insurance, our debt, any payments that we have to make towards retirement costs, things like that. So what's hard to believe is there's over 20 articles on the warrant and this is really the only article that impacts people's taxes at all. So if you look at the total overall budget that's being recommended for next fiscal year versus this fiscal year, it's a little less than a 2.8% increase. When you factor in that change year to year, the average impact for an average decessed home in town, which is currently valued just over $717,000, would be $266. So just if people had a question, like how much could I expect my tax bill to go up? If you're in the average-sized home in town and the average value, it should go up about $266 next year versus this year. The one additional item that we're trying to fund after many decades of effort is to try to add some money to our DPW operating budget to be able to do some public road and infrastructure improvements. We've always appropriated money for that need, but it's been clear from a study that we do regularly that we're not spending enough to try to keep our roads and drainage systems at a certain standard. So what's been recommended is another $560,000 within the operating budget to help get to an ultimate goal when you factor in local funding and state funding because we do get a significant amount of money from the state for our public roads, to have both of those things add up to $2.6 million annually. So if we're able to accomplish this for next year, it'll be the first time we've ever given a regular appropriation that will hopefully be able to continue for the foreseeable future of at least $2.6 million per year. And again, that's something that the Select Board, the Finance Committee, our DPW Director, you know, we've literally been talking and working on that for over a decade. So it seems like we're finally able to come up with the resources to be able to accomplish that. And all that additional money is included into that figure that I gave you previously about the average impact on taxes. Article 3 is our enterprise fund. We have four different budgets in town that get funded a little bit differently than others. One is for our local cable access program where I am right now. Another is our DPW sanitation budget. The third is the Sandwich Marina and the fourth is Sandwich Hollow's Golf Club. No money comes from taxes for any of those services. There's a small amount that we appropriate each year for sanitation that funds the disposal costs of all the trash that's generated at the schools and at our public offices. It's a really small amount in terms of the total budget and that number's not changing. So that's the only part that would come from taxes. The rest just comes from revenue that we're either going to generate or have already generated at those facilities. Article 4 is our revolving fund appropriation limits. Without getting too technical on municipal finance, there's certain accounts that town meeting has voted to set up over the years where the revenue that we generate from programs for those purposes gets set aside and then the actual cost that we bring in cover the cost to provide the service. So a great example would be if someone rents out the new Center for Active Living, we then use those funds to help pay for the building monitors in the evening when people are using the facility. So it's a really small appropriation in general and I think there's about eight or 10 different accounts that we have set up that way. There's a state requirement. A lot of the laws in Massachusetts go back a really long time. So there are some quirky things that we vote every year and this is one of them. We're required to vote these limits annually, even though they don't change year to year for the most part. Article 5 relates to our capital budget and related services. It's fair to say that some of the things that we fund in capital aren't strictly capital. They could be studies for a certain bigger capital project down the road. They could be for software, things like that. In this case, there's really not a lot being asked for. I think just under $600,000 is being recommended for the school department just to do some general repairs at their buildings. They plan to focus a lot of those on school security, being cameras and locks for doors. In addition, there's some normal vehicle repairs. In total, it's just over $1.4 million that will come from our free cash certification to pay for those improvements. There's a list of all of them in the warrant. And then there's two different capital items, one being funded by the Marina, another being funded by the golf course. They're adding over $400,000 in addition to those. So the total we're appropriating, I think, is over, just over $1.6 million, but some of that funding is coming from those departments. Article 6 is another one of those quirky articles that the state requires us to vote. And it's just for what I talked about previously, our state aid that we receive under Chapter 90 of the general laws related to public highways. So it would be for road infrastructure improvements. What's unique is we never know the dollar amount we're going to get for the next year, but the state requires us to take the vote anyway that we would accept, for lack of a better word, the free money that we could then use for upcoming years. One of the nice things about Chapter 90 money is it allows us to also fund studies. For example, if we had to hire an engineer on how to do a drainage improvement beyond what our staff is able to do in-house, we can use the funds for that. We can also allow state money to build up year to year as opposed to operating money that we have to spend each year. And then if there's any left over on June 30th of that year, it goes away and it gets returned to the town. State money we're able to carry over. So a great example that happened recently is the intersection in front of the Forestdale School at Route 130 in Quaker Meeting House Road. We were able, because that cost was very expensive, we were able to build up money over time using state funds and then complete those repairs. In the last year, as many of you have seen as you've driven in that area. Article 7 is for the school department. At the Middle High School has a cell tower on top of their roof from Verizon. The cell tower lease money that we bring in gets segregated and then that money then gets appropriated at town meeting and it can only be used for maintenance and improvement of exterior athletic fields and facilities at the school. So it's roughly about $35,000 a year. So this is a vote we take every year. There's a couple votes like this in a row that were set up by town meeting votes previously that we have to vote separately each year. Just thinking out loud, one year we might want to, you know, combine these together. So maybe one article would, you know, solve three votes so we can cut down on the time that it takes. The next article is similarly voted from a vote at town meeting that's required and that's to transfer 20% of our prior year's beach parking revenues and put that aside in a fund that could only be used to be spent for beach renourishment efforts and improvements on our saltwater beaches. So even though money comes from all of our beaches, this vote the town meeting took years ago requires us to set aside these funds and then spend it on needs at our saltwater beaches. A great example on what we've used these funds for over the year that we plan to use it again this upcoming fall is anytime we do any renourishment work on town-neck beach, we like to plant beach grass at the top of the dune, come down about a third of the way, which is all that we're allowed, as far as we're allowed to go environmentally. And our goal is to plant some beach grass this upcoming fall to help stabilize the dune as best we can. Article 9 is the fund for the Sandwich Promotions Fund. Yet again, another example of a special vote that was taken by town meeting years ago that requires us to set aside a certain amount of funds, in this case from our rooms' tax money. And then those funds get apportioned out based on the formula that's in the special act that the town approved. A certain percent to the Visitor Services Board, the same percentage to our Sandwich Chamber of Commerce and then a smaller amount to the Canal Region Chamber of Commerce. So again, this is a requirement, but we do vote it separately each year. Article 10 is something that we voted, I think, three or four town meetings in a row. And I'm sure people have heard us all talk about wastewater almost ad nauseam on Cape Cod. Not just Sandwich, but all the communities on Cape Cod are really having to address some significant wastewater problems and wastewater needs that we all have. There are some new state requirements that apply only to Cape Cod. And so as we bring money in through our Water Infrastructure Investment Fund, which town meeting voted and approved years ago, in fact, interestingly, Sandwich was the first city or town in the state that adopted the so-called WIF surcharge, which is great. And we've used those funds to then pay for certain wastewater improvements and wastewater expenses that we're incurring as we work towards a bigger solution. So this would appropriate $750,000 that already exists in our account. It just appropriates the money so we can use it to keep our engineering work moving forward. If you have a child in the school system, literally every single one of the three public schools, Oak Ridge, Forestdale and the Middle High School are all having significant wastewater improvements done on them over the next calendar year. Probably the most visible ones will start happening at the Sandwich Middle High School even before summer. And then certainly over summer when kids aren't in school, we're going to be doing a lot of work on the wastewater treatment plant there. And then we also have some planned work at Forestdale and Oak Ridge. Article 11 is our Community Preservation Act funds. This article we vote every single year and it includes three components. It appropriates the money that we're going to use for administrative expenses for the year. It appropriates a required 10% segregation of funds that we bring in for our Community Preservation Act surcharge. And those three accounts are for open space and recreation is one, historic resource is the second and the third is for community housing purposes. So the state law requires us to put 10% of our receipts in each of those accounts. The remaining 70% goes into a generic account that could be used for any of those purposes. And lastly, this article appropriates the required amount that we have to use to pay our debt payments for projects that we've previously funded through the Community Preservation Act. A lot of those have got paid off in the last year or two. There's a few that we still have, but it's nice because it's enabled us to use some of these additional funds for some new work. So that's been great. And then Article 12 is another Community Preservation Act appropriation. And this is for a specific project, which is an additional appropriation for the town hall restoration work that we're doing. If you've driven by probably our most famous town building, our most important town building, our old town hall at 130 Main Street, where the Arts Alliance now operates out of the first floor, the second floor, the auditorium is still used for most of our evening meetings, for the school committee, the finance committee, the Select Board and for special events. We need to put some money into that primarily to replace every single window in the building. Those date back to the 1950s, have significant issues, especially water infiltration. And so we need to address that. We need to re-treat the roof, which is cedar shingle roof. So we need to treat that. And then there's other water infiltration happening throughout the building on the siding. So that's going to be updated. The whole building's going to be painted. We know it's been in tough, tough shape visually for the last few years. So I think when this project is done, it's going to look great. So this would appropriate $1.2 million from the CPA funds to help pay for that. Last year at town meeting, we appropriated over $1 million from our sinking fund, which from the sale of other town properties. So no tax money has gone into this work at all. And then Heather Harper, the Assistant Town Manager, was able to get a $200,000 grant from the state to help as well. So in total, we have about $2.4 million, assuming this article gets approved. I've seen the design plans. I know our engineering firm that we're working on and our architect are getting ready to issue those bids. So as soon as town meeting votes, we'll probably be opening bids in July or August and you should start seeing work happen on the building in September. It's estimated that the work will probably take between 12 to 18 months. And again, probably the most visual thing you will see is as those windows get replaced. Article 13 and 14, they're probably be a little difficult for me to explain clearly, but I'll do my best. There was a new state law that was adopted by the legislature and the governor last calendar year called the HERO Act and it relates to disabled veterans. For those who don't know, there's several programs that exist already under state law where if you're a disabled veteran and there's paperwork that you have to file, you're entitled to certain exemptions from your motor vehicle excise payment and from your tax payment. There's several dozen people in town that apply for that now. And what happened is the state passed a couple of laws that allowed us to expand those programs a little bit. But in doing so, we need town meeting vote to be able to do that. So Article 13 says that the current exemption limits can be adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index, which will be determined each year by the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue. So if we adopt this, those current thresholds will get adjusted slightly. So people will get a better deduction if they qualify for these already. So that's the first article, Article 13. And then Article 14 specifically relates to other clauses of some very complicated tax codes. And it basically would say that, again, disabled veterans who qualify for certain exemptions, what's being recommended by the Board of Assessors and Select Board is a 25% increase in that allowed abatement. So if that exemption is approved, in addition to the current state limits, they would then get an additional 25% deduction for those. And I think it's something that the two boards that I mentioned strongly support. And again, if someone is a disabled veteran, please contact the assessing department and they can explain these in a lot better detail than I just did. And it will give you an idea. Our estimate on the 25% increase is it will probably cost us, meaning the town, about $45,000 more per year for these exemptions. And then if Article 13 passes as well, that amount would get adjusted each year by the Consumer Price Index. Article 15, and again, there's a couple of articles here that are a little bit out of the ordinary. They deal with the acceptance of certain provisions of state law. This one deals with the abandonment of funds. So for example, if someone's in tax title and that property is sold and there's other funds that are available, the way it's always worked is those stay with the town. There've been some recent changes in the federal law, not just the state law, that then the state has reacted to. And so the tax title procedures that we would typically follow for decades are now slightly different. And so what this does is town council is strongly recommended in light of these changes that the town vote, any abandoned funds would stay in possession of the town and not be required to turn over to the state. We've never had to turn those over previously, but now with these new tax title laws, we may. And so town council is strongly recommended that we adopt this part of the general laws. So if funds do exist in town related to a tax title, that it would stay with us and not be given to the state. If there's any questions on that at town meeting, I know our treasure collector can explain that better as well as town council. Article 16 is at the recommendation of our town clerk and it deals with accepting another provision of the general laws. And what it would require is any nomination papers for any elected office in town. There's a deadline and when those have to be submitted, it's the same deadline, I think, across the state. If we adopt this provision, it would require anyone running for office to pick up their nomination papers at least 48 weekday hours before. I know it's a strange phrase, 48 weekday hours, but that's what the general law says. Because there's work that the town clerk's office needs to do once someone picks up nomination papers. So this would give them more notice that they might be coming back. It doesn't change the deadline at all. It doesn't change the process on how it works. It would just require people to pick those up at least 48 hours in advance. Most of the time, people pick them up weeks in advance. So it doesn't, it shouldn't change much, but that's been recommended by the town clerk's office. Next, we have two zoning amendments. Clearly not my forte. Our Planning and Development Department and our Community Development Director, Leanne Drake, will be explaining this at town meeting. The first is quite interesting in the sense that it's a big initiative on the part of the state. And you may have read about it or heard about it, but Article 17 for us, changes our zoning bylaws related to accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are typically thought of, could be like in-law apartments above a garage. What this would do, and this is something that's taking place statewide, it would allow people by right to build up to a 900-square-foot separate dwelling on their property if there's sufficient room so they could have a property that could be rented out. It could be used for a family member. It could be a rental unit. What's important to know is that the accessory dwelling, if it gets added, has to stay in the same ownership as the primary dwelling and it cannot be sold separately. So that's interesting. It's an attempt by the state to try to address the housing crisis that exists everywhere. And I think it's something that we've all seen as prices have increased, especially on Cape, how expensive it is for people to find affordable places to live. The other thought is that it spreads out where the affordable housing would be, not just congregate in one area, but it would spread it out throughout town. And again, our planning offices and our planning board will explain this in a lot more detail at town meeting. It's to comply with state law. They've really spent a lot of time and thought into this and really seems to have done a really good job preparing this language for town meeting. Article 18 is somewhat related. And again, this is even more confusing than the last one. And it relates to non-conforming lots. So in the past, if you owned a parcel that met all of your zoning and you could build a house on it, if you owned an adjoining parcel, there was a requirement that was approved by the town that you had to join those parcels into one larger parcel so it combined the lots, if they were contiguous. What this zoning amendment would do is it would enable that lot that you joined to your primary lot to be segregated again so it could be used, for example, for an accessory dwelling unit. So it's all an attempt to try to, again, add a little bit more housing that would be more affordable. And it's something that I think towns are looking at, again, across the state. And this is our planning board's attempt to try to address that need. It'll be explained a lot better at town meeting than I just did. Article 19 is a general town bylaw amendment. Yet again, another state requirement that we're having to address locally. It seems like I've probably said on eight or nine of the articles on the warrant, they're either things that the state requires us to vote separately that might have small financial implications or in these, either zoning bylaw or town bylaw amendments. So the state recently adopted, not only in their laws but also in their building requirements and the zoning, I'm sorry, the construction codes, that short-term rentals would have to be inspected annually and registered annually with the towns. So this is a new requirement. Short-term rentals have existed and those requirements at least for five years. The requirement of the state, if you rent your property out, I think it's for more than 14 days a year, that would have to be registered with the State Department of Revenue. That's a requirement. But they never required you previously to register with your local town and for that town to perform an inspection. So we actually set up one of those revolving accounts for this. And when people registered their property for a short-term rental, it was going to be a very nominal fee, far, far, far less than what they're renting the property out, even for a week. They would have to register in town and then pay a separate fee for an inspection to take place. The inspection is very basic, mostly related to things The inspection is very basic, mostly related to things like proper egress and smoke detectors that are functioning properly. There've been some horror stories in other parts of the country where buildings haven't met code. A fire has happened with short-term renters in it, and there's been loss of life even for families on Cape Cod, if you've read in the paper. So this is really important for us to do, and again, it's just complying with our state building code and requirements at the state level. We will have to hire a part-time inspector to complete these, but the funds that people pay to register their properties is going to pay for that 100%. Article 20 and 21 are the two petition articles that we received from voters. I'll just explain these quickly and try to be factual. One of them is more confusing than the other. Article 20 is a petition article that bans the sale of small alcohol containers or NIPS that are under 100 milliliters or less, and so if that theoretically gets approved, gets reviewed by the state and signed off by the state and goes into effect, it would ban the sale of alcohol containers less than 100 milliliters in size. That's one petition article. And the second one, which is probably a little bit harder to explain, is it's a proposed ordinance that the petitioners are calling stop the spread, and what it would do is if you place a takeout order, the facility or restaurant providing the takeout order is not supposed to provide you with utensils, additional packaging, napkins, basically not supposed to provide you anything but the food to try to cut down on waste. That's the best I can do to explain it. The petitioner should be explaining that at town meeting. And then the last article is Article 22, and that's when we adjourn the town meeting, and we go, we, has a list of all the officers being elected at the upcoming town election, which is Thursday, May 8th. From, our polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and so it just lists all the articles, I'm sorry, the officers that are being elected. Plus, we have two ballot questions this year. An important one is the 1% increase in the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund surcharge. Talked about that previously, about our wastewater needs. And the second is a non-binding ballot question that was submitted by some registered voters asking the town to take a position related to the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant. So again, that one's non-binding, but that's the second ballot question that'll appear on the town election. And in short, that's about as simply as I could explain the entire warrant. Look forward to doing this again at our next special town meeting, but if you are able to, we would strongly encourage you to attend town meeting. It's open to all registered voters, Monday night, May 5th, at 7 o'clock at the middle, at our Sandwich Middle High School auditorium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Toomey. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Sandwich, and I want to inform you of an important decision coming up at annual town meeting this year. The DPW has a request for additional funding for highway, which includes taking care of our roads and also our drainage. This is a very important topic because we have a backlog of roads and drainage throughout town that we want to start addressing. I'm very aware of many residents throughout town who are concerned about their roads, but also flooding in their neighborhoods. And hopefully, this funding will be approved so we can start attacking those projects as soon as the spring and summer starts. I believe that investment infrastructure is one of the most important things a community can do. The roads are the most valuable asset in the town, and keeping on top of the roads in terms of maintenance is critical moving forward. And having enough funding to do that, including surface treatments, reconstruction, and taking care of the drainage, is critical to maintain our roads in the future.